Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 28, 2020 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
President.
Garpetian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Mr. Quintero, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for as invitations will be delivered this evening by Reverend Sherry James from the Glendale Religious Leaders Association.
Good evening. I want to ask that you lend your consciousness, and what I mean by that is just take a moment to just take a deep breath. And in this consciousness, let us awaken a spirit of unity, a spirit of peace, a spirit of joy, that there is good in this city. Let us put aside our whatever we would personally want and do what is for the highest good of all concern. We also want to lift the families that were affected by Sunday's tragedy, the Bryant family, the Alta Belli family, and all of those whose names we don't know. And so we just want to give thanks for the breadth of life that we still have. May we, may this meeting be productive, may it bring good into our city, and may it spread life throughout the city of Glendale. In his name, amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Bye, Jordan. May we have your report?
Agenda for the January 28, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, January 23 on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Thank you, and the next item?
Next item is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 4, 2020.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For February 4, 2020, the Housing Authority, there are no business agenda items. That evening, for the regular Glendale City Council meeting, took commence at 6:00 P.M. Under consent items, we have one report from General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Chief Information Officer regarding amendment of the contract with Aussie Soft LLC to expand the existing software license and service agreement for process information, historian system software for a total amount not to exceed $2,236,000 for a five-year term. Under action items, we have two reports, first from Director of Public Works regarding HVAC improvements and repairs to City Council chambers, followed by Director of Community Development regarding public outreach process for the Glendale land use, housing, and circulation element update, development and implementation of a citywide transportation impact fee, Senate Bill 743, West Glendale Sustainable Transportation, and land use study. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. The next item, please.
Under 3B is a presentation, but we are still awaiting, I believe, our guest. At 3C is an appointment of Board Commission member. This is for Gaurav Ghazarian to be appointed to the Civil Service Commission. This was Councilmember Devine's nomination made on January 21, 2020.
Ms. Devine.
Thank you. I hope my colleagues will consent to the appointment of Gaurav Ghazarian to the Civil Service Commission. He's been serving on the commission for, I think, a few more than four years and done a fantastic job. He has been chair of that commission, and he is a criminal defense attorney by profession, and I am very proud to appoint him to the Civil Service Commission.
Second nomination. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is four consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent caller. Thank you. Second. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and staff comments.
I will start from my left this evening. Mr. Garpetian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. One, I just want to take this opportunity and wish my daughter a happy birthday, Naira. It's her birthday, but we are here celebrating it in this chambers. And she's a great kid, so she deserves an Alfred Award, if you will. The other one is, I think, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Kobe Bryant, and tonight's meeting in his memory.
I think we'll accept that, and why don't we begin that moment of silence now?
Excuse me.
Thank you for bringing our attention to that, Mr. Garpetian. Did you want to jump in, Mr.?
Yeah, this was just for Kobe. But the rest of the crew were people who were there, nine, there were nine people who left us. So I was going to say to remember them too, but anyway.
Well, let's also give them, there were nine passengers onboard who, eight passengers and one pilot. Let's have a moment of silence for everyone then.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Quintero. Mr. Zagajanian. Ms. Devine.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater staff for a fabulous event, the elimination dinner, and it was actually on the stage of the Alex Theater. It was absolutely fabulous. And for those of you that remember the restaurant recess, Savan was the chef there, and he catered the dinner, and it was absolutely fabulous. But I want to congratulate Alyssa Glickman and Nina Crowe, who really did carry the ball on this one, and the entire staff at Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater. And I also attended the Lenda Hand at Brand Service Day in memory of Mark Sturdivan on Saturday, and there were quite a few volunteers who came in from all over to clean up the Brand Park. And it was in honor of Mark Sturdivan, who was a City of Glendale employee, community activist, and wildlife advocate who passed away in 2019. So I want to just thank some of the groups that were there. The National Park Service was in attendance. There was a group of vets that were there. "The Mission Continues" is what their logo is, and all the other volunteers that came forward, and especially to our Community Services and Parks Department for putting this on Trails and Open Space Program as well. So I thank you all, congratulations, and it was a lovely event in memory of Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Devine. I have a few items. These two items are feel-good. They make me feel good. I hope they make the city feel good as well. And I'd like to tell you a story because too often these types of stories go untold. On January 24, Glendale Police Officers and the GPD Homeless Outreach Proactive Enforcement Team, called HOPE, responded to a call for a homeless family of eight, consisting of two adults and six children between the ages of one and seven, who came to Glendale for one day and were staying in their car, living in their car, on Glendale Avenue and Monterey Boulevard. The family had been homeless for about five months. The officers were able to provide lunch for the family, and department resources were utilized to make hotel accommodations until a housing plan was finalized. Community Service and Parks linked the family to family promise of the Verdugos, where a family referral process began. The Glendale Unified School District was contacted and helped to provide food, baby supplies, and gift cards to the family. On January 28, the family is scheduled to meet with LA Family Housing for intake into a shelter and long-term housing plan. We are very proud of our HOPE team and the relationships that we have with community resources that allow us to provide assistance to those in need. Thank you to everyone who was a part in finding this family shelter. I told you it makes you feel good. And I'd like to take this opportunity to invite you all to the One Glendale After-School Youth Sports Program's Basketball Season Championship Day on Friday, March 6, 2020, from 6:30 P.M. to 8:30 P.M. at the Pacific Community Center. If you weren't already aware, the One Glendale After-School Youth Sports Program was created in 2015 and started with serving four elementary schools in South Glendale, targeting fourth and fifth graders, which are typically nine to 11 years old. In 2016, the program expanded to an additional four schools to serve students from a total of eight schools. The One Glendale Program takes a multi-step approach by teaching participants about the benefits of eating healthy and making smarter choices when snacking, discouraging students from drinking beverages that are high in sugar and fructose, and teaching the participants about team sports, which include flag football, volleyball, basketball, and soccer. In 2017, through grants and partnerships with surrounding colleges, universities, and professional sports teams, a component was added to provide students with the opportunity to attend a real sporting event that corresponds to the sport season. One Glendale's participants have attended UCLA football games, CSUN men's volleyball matches, LA Galaxy and LA Football Club Major League Soccer matches, and LA Clippers and UCLA men's basketball games. The program helps students with their confidence, their self-esteem, develops their leadership abilities, and serves as a major motivator for students to continue to behave and perform in the classroom so that they may continue to participate in the program. To date, the program has served 4,080 duplicated participants with another 40 students on the waitlist for the current season, and an expected enrollment of 240 students for the final season of the 2019-2020 school year, which is soccer. Sports are a crucial part of a student's growth and development, and I am so proud of our city for providing such wonderful opportunities. Thank you to everyone who takes part in that, the participants, the parents, and folks from our city staff and city family that make it a reality. My next item is to let everyone know that next week, we will be having a treat. It's a treat if you like transportation discussions. I have invited a staff member from LA Metro to discuss how to transition, how best to transition from a compressed natural gas fleet to an all-electric fleet. We had some discussion last week about buying the buses. There's been some discussion in the community about the best way and the timing to jump into the electric bus issue. So this gentleman will be giving us Metro's perspective on how to do that. It won't be a decision-making process for us, it'll just be information only, so it won't be an agenda item that we'll be voting yes or no on. And the last item is something that occurred at the Metro meeting last Thursday, and on the board agenda was a motion by the LA City Contingency, which consists of Mayor Garcetti and his other council member appointees, to give needy students from the LA Unified School District free transit passes throughout the county. I was a little taken back that only the LA Unified School District was being considered for such a program. So I did make a motion and an amendment to study the costs and the benefits and the opportunities to extend that same free bus program to needy students in the Glendale Unified School District. That doesn't mean next week we're going to be handing out bus passes to everyone, or that the B-line is going to be free, but we're going to go on the process to see how Metro can best serve that issue and perhaps look into what it would mean for the Glendale B-line system to offer that relief to students who are transit-dependent and who are needy. And that's all I have at the moment.
I have a question, Mayor. Is there any chance that community college students could be included in that program? Because I know we have a lot of students that are either living in their cars or they are taking transit, and that would be really beneficial to them.
Yes, so as a corollary to that motion, all the community colleges in the Los Angeles County area are going to be studied as well for needy students who may receive those bus passes. There already is quite a discounted pass called the U-Pass for community college students, but that, all the community colleges are going to be included in that as well.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you.
I see that the Council General from Japan has arrived. Has the Council General from Armenia shown up yet? Well, we're going to wait a little bit because I know I think it'd be great if both of you were to make your presentation together. But we'll wait so long. If for some reason our Council General from Glendale is detained, we'll be sure not to keep you waiting too long, Council General. Thank you. Are there any comments from staff? Okay, let's go to the next item.
Next item is community event announcements, as well as the public comment portion, that's also for three minutes, for anyone who wishes to speak now instead of about the conclusion of all city business.
The clerk has handed me one card this evening from Tony Passarella.
Councilmembers and staff, Tony Passarella. I just want to give you an update, pretty sure you're not aware of this, but the e-scooters, people are still getting injured on the e-scooters all over the country, and they've had to put so many regulations on the scooters, the cities have, that now they're starting to pull, the scooter companies are pulling the scooters out. For example, San Diego, which had thousands of scooters, all the scooters are gone from San Diego and other scooters. And I don't think I've really taken the time to thank you, Mr. Garpetian, Mr. Zagajanian, Ms. Devine, for saying no, not now, and hopefully not ever, but I hate to put a but on this, but I'm going to. I shouldn't, had to come here like three straight months to give you the facts, to show you video, to show you slides. You should have done the research on your own to see that this was not good for Glendale. But I did what I had to do, and it worked out, and I thank you. I thank you. Now, who knows what's next down the pipe? Next week, next month, next year, two years from now, you know, some companies might come in here with some sophisticated, you know, electronics or some idea, but, you know, just because other cities may be implementing that doesn't mean that we have to, right? After all, the safety and quality of life is paramount, and you all took an oath, it's your obligation to protect us. So if something comes in that's questionable, please, please do your research. We shouldn't have to put all this evidence in front of you, right? So there could be liability. I mean, if it's something and people actually get injured, severely injured, or possibly causes death or some serious illness, then the liability's going to fall somewhere. If you allowed it to happen, whatever it is coming into the city, or you should have done your due diligence to say, hey, this is not safe, and there shouldn't be, if it's 1% not safe, especially for children and elderly people, then it's not safe. You need to challenge, you know, the higher authority, if that's what it takes, and not be afraid to do that, right? Your legacy is at stake. Your legacy as mayor, Mr. Najarian, is at stake, and all you council members, it's at stake. If you make one wrong decision, and you could have stopped it, and you didn't, your legacy is at stake, and there's liability, there's a liability factor. I'm just, that's just a warning. So think about it. Please do your research on whatever comes down the pipe. Don't just trust the billion-dollar companies to present you and then just rubber stamp it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I have, I've just received notice that the Council General from Armenia is not going to be able to make it. He is indisposed. Council General Muto, would you like to take the podium? And did we read this item into the record?
No, we have not, but item 3B is a presentation by Japanese Council General Akira Muto.
And Council General, we welcome you to Glendale. We appreciate you coming. Not an easy distance. It's not too far, but at this time of day, travel can be difficult. And I'd like to add that several months ago, I was the guest of the Foreign Ministry of Japan in visiting several cities in Japan, one of them our sister city of Higoshi Osaka. And I know many of us on council have or will be visiting Japan as well, and I want to state that the hospitality and the commitment to rekindling the relationships that we had previously are certainly a great step forward in relationship between our sister city and the people of Japan. And you're no stranger to Glendale. You've been before us many times for many different issues. Most recently, the Tea Garden, in which you have sent over, I'm not stealing your speech, am I? Tell me to cut it if I go too far. And the renovation with the experts and artisans from Japan. And we invite you today so you can give us news of another element of cooperation between, not necessarily Glendale, but a country that Glendale residents hold near and dear to their heart, Armenia. Council General Akira Muto.
Well, thank you. Good evening, and I would like to thank Mayor Najarian and Glendale City Council members for providing me the opportunity to address you and the citizens of Glendale today. Over the last several years, the Council General of Japan in Los Angeles has collaborated on various events to celebrate the ties between the Armenian and Japanese communities. We have held events at Glendale's Brand Library in the Japanese Friendship Garden, as well as the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church, exploring the diplomatic ties between the two countries and legacy figures such as Diana Apka, a longtime resident of Japan, named the first honorary consul of Armenia to Japan in the early 20th century. I am grateful to the consulate of Armenia and the city of Glendale for partnering with the Japanese consulate on several of these occasions. The Armenian and Japanese communities have strong relations in the United States, particularly in Southern California, as both are among the largest diaspora communities here locally. As to diplomatic relations between the two countries, 2020 will mark the 28th anniversary, as well as 10 years since the opening of the Embassy Armenia in Tokyo, and five years since the opening of the Embassy of Japan in Yereban. Tonight, I am pleased to have the opportunity to introduce a special project the government of Japan has sponsored in Armenia at Etsmiazin Cathedral, the mother church of the Armenia Apostolic Church. Between 2014 and 2018, Japanese experts contributed to the conservation of religiously and historically valuable textiles in Armenia. Delegations led by Professor Mia Ishii of Saga University had various workshops in Armenia to share technology and know-how to preserve items such as ritual clothing and accessories stored at Etsmiazin Cathedral. The Japanese government has recently made a special decision to extend this project upon request by His Holiness Patria Karkin II. Thus, most recent delegations traveled to Armenia last month. I appreciate the opportunity to show a video which features this latest delegation visit. Now, I would like to once again thank Mayor Najarian and the Glendale City Council for allowing me the chance to speak today. I hope for the continued development of relations between the two countries, as well as the Armenian and Japanese communities throughout the world, and especially in Southern California, where they have such a strong impact and play a significant role in the local community. So thank you.
Thank you, Council General. And let's see the video. Well, thank you again, Mr. Consul General. It is, so this was obviously in Armenian, from an Armenian station, but it was subtitled. The crux of it is that experts from Japan have traveled to Armenia to restore the ancient textiles and fabrics and manuscripts and other items of the Armenian Church. And it is incredible that Japan would honor the Armenian Church in such a matter. So I think it's very great work that the, from the Prime Minister all the way on down to the actual laborers and technicians for their good work. So, thank you very much. Consul? Mr. Karpetian?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Consul General for being here tonight, and I know that we've been trying to work together and bring our communities together. Glendale is a very welcoming city, and we have, I believe, 64 different languages that is being spoken in Glendale. And I want to thank you for your efforts, because we had a former Consul General as well, that we worked very closely, but you are taking the bar really high, so we appreciate that. And the garden looks very nice. The tea garden in Brown Park, it looks great. And a lot of newlywed, or weddings, they take pictures in the garden and they use it a lot, so we thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Agajanian? Or Ms. Devine?
Well, just thank you, Consul General. This is not only a beautiful, but a historically cultural effort that you've made, and it was very kind, very thoughtful, and I'm sure it was much appreciated by the Armenian prelacy that was there. So thank you so much for cooperation, collaboration, and working together with not only Armenia, but Glendale as well. Thank you.
Mr. Agajanian?
Yes. I would like to thank Mr. Akira Muto to be here, and his assistant there here. In December of 2019, I was invited to Japan, not as a council member, but as a reporter. I was lucky to go and see Japan on different occasions. I reported on television about Japan, China, and neighboring countries, Vietnam, Korea, and all other places. As I said, I reported about Japan on different occasions. But this was very different when you see it. I mean, I visited Tokyo, Kyoto, the old capital of Japan, and I visited Hiroshima. First, when you go and see, there was this building that was burned, they left as a, for the youngsters to see and to know what war can bring, based on what I understood. And when you see the building is burned, that just giant building, it was burned, I realized that what had happened in 1945, when they dropped the atomic bomb. But, you know, I was surprised that for five days, I was looking to see one police officer. I couldn't see any police officer, whether traffic police or, you know, on the street for security. And just after five days, there was one car was going, not that stopping the automobile or a person, they were just going. On intersections everywhere, there is no police. They police themselves. The traffic light goes yellow, everybody stops. It's red, definitely they are not going to go. Or they are not going to cross the street in the middle of somewhere. They all will go where it's marked for pedestrian crosswalk. I mean, I'm really shocked and surprised they were so disciplined. And more surprising, since from 1945, I mean, this is not a very long time ago, it's like 70-some years, it's passed, this country to become the third, you know, most advanced country, most rich country in the world. Of course, for a long time, Japan was the second after the United States, but after Chinese, you know, they became stronger, they became more industrial country, now they are second. So United States is first, China is second, Japan is third. It's really surprising. Japan is more advanced now and richer than Spain, or France, or England, or Germany. I mean, this is shocking. I had to report about, as I said, about the countries, but to see that what's going on in Japan, the discipline and love of the country, I'm really amazed. So I want to congratulate you, Mr. Muto, and your assistant. And hopefully we'll continue our relationship with the country of Japan, Glendale and Japan. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero?
I also want to welcome you to the city of Glendale, and hopefully you'll be back many more times.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening and your presentation, Honorable Consul General. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 7, Adoption of Ordinances. 7A is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Glendale and the Maricon App Brand LLC pertaining to signage in the advertising overlay zone, ASOZ. This was introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on January 21st, 2020.
Mr. Agajanian?
I would like to move the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item.
Next item is Director of Public Works regarding discussion of commercial and multifamily solid waste collection services. 8A1 is a motion authorizing staff to meet with six proposers, seek clarification and additional information pertaining to proposals to determine financial feasibility and effectiveness of said proposals.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As it stands today, we have an open permit based on private solid waste collection service system available to commercial customers. Today, 33 haulers have permits in the city of Glendale. On July 11th of 2013, the city, in accordance with the Public Resources Code, issued a formal notification letter to all private solid waste haulers informing them of our intent to evaluate the implementation of a franchise system. On September 26th of 2017, the city council directed staff in a special meeting to issue an RFP. On August 12th of 2019, that RFP was released with a due date of October 23rd of 2019. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Emrani to provide you with information as it relates to staff's recommendation to have further discussions, clarification, and additional information based on the RFPs that were received, and our recommendation of moving forward ultimately with six of the proposers. With that, Mr. Emrani.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We received nine proposals, we received nine proposals, and the staff had engaged an outside consultant, SCS Engineering, to help review these proposals for us. There was a step one, which was a proposal responsiveness review, and out of the nine proposals, one of them, one of the proposals was determined to be unresponsive, so we were left with eight proposals. The second step was the technical review of the remaining eight proposals, and these involved a qualitative analysis of the following evaluation criteria: qualifications and experience, collection services performance, billing and customer service, customer education and outreach, and corporate citizenry, service implementation plan, facilities, processing and recycling plans, office and maintenance facilities, optional additional information, and environmental performance and stewardship. Based on the assessment of these proposals, which was solely based on the criteria described that I just described, the results were, the technical review determined that six of the eight proposers achieved qualifications that would indicate their overall ability to meet the city's objectives and deliver the greatest value to the city's ratepayers. And these finalists are Athens Services, NASA Services, Republic Services slash Consolidated Disposal Services, LLC, Southland Disposal Company, Waste Management of California, and Waste Resources Technologies. So based on this recommendation, or based on this analysis rather, we are respectfully recommending that the city council approve this attached motion authorizing the staff to meet with six proposers to have discussions, as well as seek clarification and additional information pertaining to the proposals to determine financial feasibility and effectiveness of these proposals. And with that, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Can you give us the list again, Mr. Emrani?
Absolutely. Athens Services, NASA, Republic, Southland Disposal, Waste Management of California, and Waste Resource Technologies.
And again, summarize what the steps going forward are to be.
Absolutely. So we are looking at doing a complete rate analysis of, based on the submitted costs, and additional dialogue such as checking the references and following up on, perhaps even would include site visits, but to make sure that we do a very thorough analysis of the submitted proposals to determine the viability of these six vendors in terms of their performance for the city of Glendale.
I'll start from my left and come across.
So, basically, no decisions being made tonight? Am I correct? And also, meanwhile, are we going to meet and concur with our, is there a process like that as well, that we have to meet and concur with our?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. No decisions being made this evening outside of council. If council were to approve the recommendation of staff to move forward with having discussions with six of the eight proposers, that would be one decision point. If council said yes, go ahead, meet with the six, have further discussions as Mr. Emrani outlined. Simultaneous to that, we would have discussions with the employee associations impacted, to have discussions again as it relates to where we are in terms of any decision points that may come out of the further discussions that we have with the six proposers. Ultimately, we would have to come back to the city council for a decision point, whether, based on the financial information that we're able to gather, based on all of the reference checks that need to occur, based on kind of this third step that we haven't concluded or even started at this time, our hope would be that we would be before the city council sometime in the summer with possible recommendations of what we think might work as it relates to solid waste collection for commercial services. But all of that would have to be done through a process, as well as concurrently a meet and confer process by way of labor associations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Agajanian?
Thank you. I have problem with the way this has been presented. I have problem because I had business before, and I had all the time problem with trash hauling companies. And I would like to see, I mean, we are forcing the businesses here to deal with one company, and that's where I have problem with. The reason being is if the business owner, for some reason, doesn't, is not satisfied with the work of that trash hauler, then the person has no choice. Or, let's assume the company X, which I had problem with, and I ask another company to replace, and working with that company, now you are forcing me saying, no, even you don't like this trash hauler, you have to work with him because you have no other choice. There is one company covering that area. So what I had in my mind, and I want to talk about it, is that rather than dividing in four zones, not to make it real small, to divide it into three zones, three zones, and in each zone, there will be two companies for each zone. So, again, so I would like to see three zones in Glendale, and in each zone, two trash haulers, not just one, and ask the public that this is your only choice, you have no other choice. I was suggesting if we can do this, will be more reasonable, and general public, I think, will be happier if there is two trash haulers, they don't like the one, so they will call the other one and see which one, you know, satisfy him or his business, rather than to be stuck with one company and there is no other choice. Of course, I was told if a person is not happy with one of the trash haulers, maybe city will do it. I just wonder if we want to get, if city doesn't want to get involved with commercial trash hauling, then doesn't make sense. We will be substitute for those companies that the public does not like. So my suggestion will be as I described before, or about.
I'm going to give that to the city attorney, but my thoughts are that we've, a year or so ago, we had made a decision to look at four zones and have one hauler per zone. So would this be taken as a motion to reconsider? Or how would that be?
Members of council, as you note, it's been over two years, I think, since the council, we had that discussion, and then the RFP was issued based on the council direction, which was for a multiple zone, you know, single vendor in each zone system. So if the council wanted to change that, that'd have to be a separate discussion, that we'd have to agendaize and have it at a different time. So basically, we'd have to, that was the council's direction, we'd have to essentially table this discussion and bring it back for further discussion at a later time. And as a result, and to follow up on that, if the council decided on a different system, that would necessitate either reissuing an RFP or at least requiring a supplemental RFP, because our view is that the proposals that were given were based on the RFP as designed, which was for those three zones, for a single vendor in each zone, four zones, excuse me, with a single vendor in each zone. So it would require at a minimum a supplemental, if not a brand-new RFP.
Excuse me, can I say something related to?
Yes, 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 Mr. Agajanian.
See, we are deciding for next 30, 40 years. If we are delaying this decision for a few months, I think it's well worth it to look into it and study better, because whatever we will decide will be for 30, 40 years. To redo the RFP or anything will be delayed, this program will be delayed, or this action will be delayed for a few months, so the benefit will be very different then.
The timeline is what, five years and five years?
Five years with an option to renew for another five, so it's a 10-year...
And the option is the city's option?
Yeah.
So it's a five-year contract with a five-year option, it's not a 30-year.
So this is, and we are delaying is two months or three months?
No, it's not two months. We started in 2017, and we are still here. The RFP, you have to pull an RFP, issue a new RFP, go back and, I don't know, let's discuss it. I think we're... I think we're, we've gone through the discussion of three zones or four zones, and also one other thing, because I had the same concern as Mr. Agujianian about having one hauler representing or controlling one zone, and part of the RFP, part of the upcoming discussions will be the prices that's going to be determined, I believe, in every zone, so it cannot be one zone cannot be so much different than the other zone. So I think these are the things that fairness and the price gouging, or if you will, it will be all controlled by the upcoming discussions. And it's a five-year contract with five-year option, discussed this to death, if you will, when we decided to go to four zones and one hauler per zone.
I do have several cards from the public. I have three. Would you like to speak before that? Mr. Quintero.
So I wasn't on the council when this decision was made, but my feeling is, overall, the concept of one hauler in each zone, although we have a very competent staff, and I'm sure they're going to be on top of everything, et cetera, just a concept in general, I don't accept. I don't think it's going to lead to a positive experience for everyone. So I would be a proponent of four, five, six, however many haulers the city decides, let them all compete within the city of Glendale. And while there may be some companies that are going to overwhelm the opposition, that's the free market. That's the way, that's the way it should be. And if they take losses, it's to the advantage of the people who are paying the fees. But I have a feeling that competition being what it is, I'm sure there may be smaller companies or larger companies that are going to provide a great service, and in fact, the market will balance out. I hadn't thought about the idea of more than one company in each district competing, but that may be also feasible. But before we even, I'm kind of curious, those companies that didn't qualify, for instance, we received a letter from a company right on our border, right there on San Fernando Road, and can we legally, can we talk about why specific companies have not been, didn't meet the criteria, did not sort of reach the point of being accepted for negotiations?
I'll either defer to Mr. Emrani or Mr. Galanian. I'll say that of the eight firms that submitted proposal were deemed, they were all complete and responsive, but staff and Mr. Emrani and Mr. Galanian can explain why they're recommending to move forward with the next step.
Okay, so it's not that a company right next to the city of Glendale, I mean, they were, the proposal was deemed complete and responsible, but for whatever reason, the staff wasn't happy with the response. So yeah, I mean, if we can do it, I'd like to know why some companies weren't, couldn't get to the negotiating.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Quintero, as I mentioned earlier, the recommendation was based on a technical review that we had established criteria for in the RFP. And our consultant basically went through all the proposals that we had received, and they provided scores for, you know, individual categories, and these were tabulated and reviewed by the committee that we looked at, and it was determined that the top six basically had the qualifications, stronger qualifications, to provide the services that we were required. We did receive the two letters from the two companies that did not make the shortlist, essentially, and as I responded to them and mentioned, we would be happy to sit down with them and discuss and provide additional details, but because this process is not completed yet, we can't really go into the details to protect the other companies.
All right, and then finally, let me say that I would also envision that the city of Glendale would also be able to compete along with the private companies. Now, that technically may not be easy to do, since we in fact are going to be receiving a fee from the private haulers, but I've got a lot of truck, and it would be very expensive to buy the extra trucks, et cetera. But I've got a lot of confidence in our city employees. They've done it for many, many years. They know the neighborhoods, are motivated, so and I'm not going to be here to make the decision, but if I were around, I would also, you know, be voting to have the city of Glendale compete with the private haulers.
Okay, I do have three cards, and we'll, I think we all reserve our rights to address any of these different motions that we have. Four cards. Mr. Agujianians and Mr. Quinteros are slightly different from each other. But let's hear from the public first. Brian Niehaus.
How many minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Brian Niehaus. I'm a labor representative, and I represent the Glendale City Employees Association, which is the bargaining unit that represents the sanitation workers in the Integrated Waste Management Division. Let me first start by saying these sanitation workers are some of the hardest working people in this city. They are out there oftentimes six days a week, up at the crack of dawn, busting their hump in less-than-glamorous conditions, all to the dedication of the people of this community. And there's a real concern amongst them about this agenda item. There is an understanding that there's a problem with the current system, with multiple vendors collecting trash through the city alongside of the city workers. But the best option, in our humble opinion, is to kick out the vendors and bring all of it in-house, where the city really assures to keep control of the quality and the cost on behalf of the residents. We've seen many examples in neighboring cities that have contracted out these trash services, and you see a diminished quality of service to the residents and an increase in the cost. Short of that, what we would respectfully request the council would consider is separating out the multifamily units from the business accounts. Currently, residents have their choice between the vendors or the city workers, and eighty percent, eighty percent of the multifamily dwellings currently choose to have their trash serviced by city workers. So what we would request is, let's respect the choice that the residents have made there and not take away that option. Now, I just want to briefly, I know there's been discussion that if this did move forward and there were some city workers displaced, that they could go and work for some of these private contractors, and I do want to address that. You know, we are going to be meeting with the city staff, they have reached out to the association, but I wanted to take the opportunity to address this directly with the council tonight. We don't see that as a viable option. That really jeopardizes the retirement and the benefits that these city workers have earned through years of service to the city. So what we would ask is, let's do right by the citizens of this community and also what's right for the workers. Those two things don't often converge, but I think in this case they do. I think we can do right by the residents and right by the workers by at least keeping those multifamily units serviced by the city workers. Again, that's what those residents have overwhelmingly chose to go with the city workers, so it would do right by them and do right by those city workers that have serviced the community for as long as they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Niehaus, I understand there was a nasty flu bug going around last week. I hope our family members in Glendale Integrated Waste are feeling better.
I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matt Blackburn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Matt Blackburn, and I'm here representing Universal Waste. We're one of the eight, but not one of the six that were selected. I sent a letter earlier that I wanted to just read into the record. You know, we prepared the following letter to request that Universal Waste Systems be included with the group of companies that are moving to step three of the RFP process. Based on the criteria laid out in the staff report, UWS has clearly met the minimum requirements and should have been included in the staff's recommendation. When inquiring about the reasons UWS was not included in the recommendation, we were told that our response did not meet the minimum requirements to be considered and move forward to step three. When we asked for further clarification on not meeting the minimum requirements, we received the following email stating that, and I quote, "While your proposal was complete and responsive to the RFP, it was staff's assessment that your proposal was not strong enough to move on to the next phase of the consideration. Based on the limited information in the staff report and the two emails received from the staff, we don't believe that there is sufficient data to support eliminating universal waste from the process. We find it interesting that your staff was concluded that our proposal is not strong enough to move forward. However, the staff report does not include any of the evaluation or scoring for each company and provides no transparency to the process. Therefore, we offer the following as to why we believe that our proposal meets the requirements of the technical review and should be included in step three of the evaluation process. Under qualifications and experience, Universal Waste was established in 1986 and is based in Santa Fe Springs. The company has adequate resources that far exceed the requirements to serve the city of Glendale. UWS currently services multiple franchise areas in two different states. Most notably, one of the largest franchises areas is in the city of Los Angeles with over 6,000 customers just south of the Glendale border. Customer service performance, UWS has multiple franchise agreements, again, in one of the largest franchise areas in the city of Los Angeles. We're one of the largest four haulers in the city. And through that transition, and to date, we still maintain over a 99% success rate in our transition, our service, we're meeting every contract requirement, and that contract is over $3.5 million a month in annual revenue, or monthly revenue. So it's very comparable to what you're doing here. There's no reason to suggest that we're not strong enough to service any of the zones in your city. Billing and customer service, UWS has a customer service center with over 20 agents available to the city of Glendale. We bill over 50,000 customers a month, and we far exceed the minimum requirements of your proposal under that category. Customer outreach and education, we have 12 community outreach personnel currently staffed that do all of our outreach and education to all of our customers for all AB 341, 1826, all the state mandated recycling laws. We've developed a customized app that they use to keep all of the cities that we service in compliance with the state laws. Our implementation plan, we've successfully rolled out multiple franchise areas. Can I take a minute to finish?
You can take 15 seconds.
Okay, well, you have the letter. At the end of the day, you know, you've chosen six of eight. We feel that we're more than qualified. Seven of eight isn't going to take you that much more time. This is a huge decision. We'd love you to come out and see our facilities, see our MRF, our transfer station, our organic facility. We have more than enough capacity to meet your needs, and we think that making a seventh exception to the six of eight and see what we can offer too. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gasparian.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm here tonight, my name is John Gasparian, President of American Reclamation, and I'm happy to see you've received the letter we sent out earlier today. It's regarding the commercial and family, multifamily collection services. And I'd like to say I'm a little bit disappointed. I received an email last night, late last night, stating that we were not going to be selected to go on to the next phase, and that's why I'm here tonight, to ask to be moved on to the next phase. We are fully capable, we've been in business for over 60 years, we're located here in Glendale, as mentioned, by the 5134 freeway. We've been able to service many other municipalities, entities, such as the MTA, we've been able to take them to their diversion levels to meet the successful rates they determined. We service the Burbank Airport, and we've implemented recycling programs for them as well. But more importantly, it was brought up, it was mentioned about facilities. And I think moving forward, in every city, you need companies and facilities behind you that will help you reach these diversion goals, and facilities that can maintain buyback centers and what have you. You're seeing buyback centers close down, and we've been able to keep ours open to service the community and service Glendale. We have a buyback center, we have a chipping and grinding facility for green waste with an electric grinder. We have this construction and demolition facility, a full-blown recycling facility that's been in operation for over 60 years here in Glendale. I don't see how we cannot be on the list to move forward. And I think our letter, I hope everyone had a chance to read it, will dictate a lot more, but that's where I'm at. I'd like to move on, I'd like to be part of the evaluation team, and, you know, as mentioned, seventh one and eighth one, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. It's just going to give your business community a much larger selection, you're going to be much fairer to them, it's going to be an uproar as it is for them to see these fixed rates, where right now, they're able to, if I'm not doing my job, they get to move to the next person and get a lower rate. That's going to be burdened alone. We have not built our company by acquisition or mergers, although I have no problem with acquisition and mergers. We've built it on solicitation and on referrals. And if you go throughout the business community here in Glendale, that's where we get our business, because one office building, another supermarket has used our services, has been able to, we've been able to pick up their recyclables, and they've referred us to the next. And I think that speaks mountains. So please reconsider, and please add American Reclamation to the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Haik Petrosian.
Good afternoon, City Council and staff. My name is Haik Petrosian with Commercial Waste Services. We are one of the companies who submitted a proposal who was not being considered on today's agenda. Not only are we a licensed hauler, but we are current residents of the city of Glendale. We respectfully disagree with the current staff report. We feel we exceed all the minimum requirements listed in the RFP. Not only do we exceed the minimum requirements, but we have two major accomplishments. We have recently, in the last 24 months, we transitioned the whole city of the Wine Gardens in under 22 days. We transitioned through the city of Maywood in less than 14 days. So those are unheard-of transitions. Also, currently, we're the exclusive service provider for the Department of Water Power for the city of Glendale. So we do all the large dumpsters for the city of Glendale. So it kind of feels like we're good enough to do the Department of Water Power, but we're not good enough to do the businesses. We're confident that our proposal has many innovative service features, if you look in depth. One important item I feel that staff report is lacking, but I'm assuming it's purposeful, but it's something that we heard time and time, and I hear it over and over today, is pricing. There's no pricing listed. So I feel like the more service providers you negotiate with, it's more advantageous for the city. Negotiating with eight, nine is more advantageous for the city than to start negotiating with six. You'll be able to negotiate better pricing, better service, better features for the customers. Today, I stand here and ask that we just be granted the opportunity to go to the next phase. I don't expect to be granted a license, just an opportunity, a fighting chance. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. I believe American Rec is also a service provider, so I found it, right, you guys do the bulky items for the city. So I just found it weird that two companies that provide services for the city currently were eliminated from this process, and it was a little shocking to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rafi Krikorian.
I just think this is not a good way to... I just think this is not a good way to go. You're killing competition. What will happen is prices will go up, service will go down. There's no motivation for these people to provide good service. They're going to be the only game in town. At the same time, I'm hearing everybody come up and plead with you to give them a slice of the business, and I think the fair thing to do is to give them all the business. Everybody, let them go out and continue competing. If this is about, if this is to save traffic or clean up the pollution, you can always say, you know, let's clean up your equipment. Bring in cleaner trucks, maybe efficient trucks or non-polluting trucks. Convert to a different source of power, like propane engines instead of, like the buses do, you know, in the old days. If you were stuck behind a bus, you were in a black cloud. And today, you can follow a bus, and you won't even notice any smoke coming out of it. So if this is about environmental reasons, there's other ways to address it. No customer is going to be happy dealing with one vendor and having no choice. Nobody wants that. If you were in business today, you wouldn't want that forced upon you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that, those are the only cards that I have. Okay, so we have, we have two, I guess, three potential routes to continue with the way that we've started this process. Mr. Agujianian's suggestion to split it into three districts with two haulers per district, and Mr. Quintero's, which was six.
Everyone competes in the city of Glendale.
So my thoughts are, we went through a lengthy discussion on this two years ago. This wasn't something that we took lightly or in a cavalier fashion. We, actually, there's another option, and that's just let the city do it. So that's the fourth one out there. And I do appreciate the good work of our city employees. They've come through in the crunch for us many times. It's a difficult decision. I personally know almost all of the applicants to this. Some of my acquaintances are going to get left behind, if not at this stage, maybe at the next stage. And that includes my relationships with the city employees and the other haulers. My thought is, we've come too far to turn back, and we haven't even completed our process at this point. The next step is to flesh out the applications and to seek an understanding of the best value that each of the remaining six applicants or candidates can provide. We're not negotiating at this point, but it's getting a better understanding as to their business plan, their business model, and what rates would look like for our residents. As well as the initial goal of this, which is to get a handle on the waste stream that's produced in Glendale. We've got the Shaw Canyon, which has a limited, a limited future, limited lifespan ahead. We're having more and more requirements placed upon us by the state of California for recycling, for organic pickup, and others. I think the only way we can really get a handle on this is if we continue on this process, continue to work with those six applicants who we've been winnowed down to, and then have a report back with the results and make a decision at that point with more of the information spelled out. That's just where I'm at, at this point.
I would like to suggest the offer which I had and see if there is any interest on it. So three zones and six haulers to compete, I mean, two in each zone rather than residents of Glendale to be obligated to be working with one company. I think that will be, to me, will be relatively more fair than to divide to four zones and one company.
But why are you raising that now, Mr. Agujianian? We had this discussion two years ago, and you're bringing it up at the last, essentially the last night.
I spoke about it then also, but this is, what I was told was this is a study session, not that, okay, we bring this, and now we can't do anything. This never been told to me that this is it, now it's too late to come up with any ideas or any suggestion. This is the suggestion that I have. Let's look into it and see where we go. One company, one zone is dangerous. I mean, people, they have to work with one company, and they're not happy, they have no choice. I mean, I don't want to hear this, that if they have, they're not happy, then city of Glendale will come and take over that one house, or not, I'm sorry, that one business, whether commercial or, you know, otherwise. If we want to get somehow exclude city from doing this to haul the commercial and industrial waste, so we better do something that we don't need city to be involved with it. And that's the choice of having at least one another company that I be able. I had business, I had this problem. And you telling me that I don't want to work with them and says, no, you have to work with this company, you have no choice? That's not right way for the business to be forced to do that, in my opinion. That's why I want to see if there is any second to it, so.
Ms. Devine.
Okay, first of all, Mr. Imani Imran, would you please explain why we are doing this? Why is this good for the city?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine, we are doing this because there are several advantages. We are going from a system that we have 33 haulers, basically, that are providing service to our businesses, and there is no, other than them paying their fees, their AB 39 fee. We really don't have any control over the regulatory side of things. There is issues with trucks, basically potentially companies servicing the same area right next to each other. So we have a lot of trucks on the street from a impact to the pavement, from the impact to the environment. We don't have really any control over the type of equipment that they use. So from all of these, and we're trying to do this so we can provide a more consistent and uniform standards in terms of the delivery of these services to our businesses and multifamily housing greater than five units. And in addition, the, one of the other main elements is basically the, as I mentioned, the regulatory compliance. The state of California's mandate in terms of the waste diversion and compliance with that, we really have no way of controlling that with the system that we have in place. So we are moving forward, we're making this recommendation to move forward with the system so that we can have greater control. If I may, address the quality of service. We do have safeguards that we built in to the system so that if, it's true that, obviously, if the trash is not picked up, the city staff will take care of it. But we also have safeguards in terms of liquidated damages, in terms of annual reviews and audits, and making sure that the companies that provide these services do what they said they will. And if they do not, we have mechanisms, we have safeguards in place to terminate basically their contract. So the, there was a lot of thought that went into putting together this RFP and providing those types of assurances.
So when we, if, if, if and when we get to that stage of contracts, there will be safeguards, mechanisms in there that will protect the multifamily units, the owners and the commercials. My next question is about staff because I want to make sure that we are not going to sacrifice any jobs and not even to the point of moving them to other positions. What is your thought about that, about staff, and how we're going to handle the staff, our haulers, if we do something like this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may answer that question, Councilmember Devine, first and foremost, I'd like to say, in echoing what Mr. Niehaus said earlier about the city of Glendale and our integrated waste workers, some of the hardest-working individuals of this organization who give their heart and soul, day in and day out, to make sure that that department and that section is run well and everyone's trash is picked up when it's supposed to. And the follow-up is unbelievable. So none of this has to do with the city of Glendale employees, the dedication of our employees, and the work that they do day in and day out. And I think they know that based on the fact that they have been here for a long time, and those who haven't necessarily been here for a long time and may not know the culture of the city of Glendale, and how we truly have dealt with a number of staff reductions in the past, layoffs in the past. And Glendale goes above and beyond in terms of moving forward, if there are any layoffs, to make sure that individuals have positions within the organization that would work well for them. But putting that aside, that's the past, looking into the future, and if, again, if is with a capital IF, council ultimately moves down this path based on possible recommendations from the staff, and your thoughts ultimately in terms of the policy benefits of a possible franchise for commercial waste. If we go down this path, based on what we know today, and based on the staffing levels that we have today, and based on the routes that we have today, both on the commercial side and on the residential side, I could comfortably, as the city manager of this organization, say that the effects would be none to minimal. And we have met with staff at different intervals, at nauseam, and appropriately at the different intervals, to provide that information, whether it's directly to staff or by way of the GCA, to say that we would continue to work with the staff. We haven't even gone through the meet and confer process, as you know, and Mr. Niehaus said that they were just informed of our intent to want to sit down and have conversations. But based on the staffing levels that I see today, again, I will state, minimal to none in terms of the effects of our staff. And I continue to, I have to have a range in there, just based on changes that may occur between the time a decision, a recommendation is given to council and an ultimate decision that is made, because I would never want to not speak the truth. But based on what I see today, I wouldn't see any, any effects to that section. But again, it would be minimal to none. And I hope I answered your question.
Excellent. Thank you. No, you did. Mike, another question is, what would be the cost, or what would it mean if we did what the gentleman suggested and separate the multifamily from commercial and leave the multifamily to our own staff and just do the commercial to the outside vendors?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine, in our RFP, we stipulated for that option. So the costs that we received are for either the commercial-only and the multifamily housing. So we have provided for that option, and that's something that we would be looking at as well.
Okay, very good, very good. So after asking, oh, and the other reason, another thing is, I'm for, I would go along with investigating this item and moving forward with the process. However, I would suggest that we add the two companies that were here tonight because having read what their qualifications are, well, at least in one letter, and hearing them tonight, I do have a question about why they were not included. And it seems to me that if we go ahead with Mr. Agujianian's suggestion up the road, we're going to need eight haulers. And maybe this is the time when we should look at all of them, or even if we decide to go with Mr. Quintero's idea of just letting it be a free-for-all as we have it now with eight haulers, that maybe we should include the two that were here tonight. So that would be my suggestion, is that we go through the process and include all the eight, only because I don't know why they were eliminated. I just don't, I don't.
Actually, not the nine.
Okay. That's the fifth option we have now.
Right, well, I feel the same way, but specifically, the two companies that are doing business with the city currently, they must have gone through an RFP or some sort of qualification. We don't have any issues with the service they're providing now, so I think they should be in on the negotiations and see if they can carve out a role. They may not succeed, but at least they're, they're competing.
Okay. I'm going to recognize you for your motion, but first, I just want to say that the step two technical review involved everything except pricing and value. And to basically throw out the work that our consultant has done and just say, anyone who's applied, come on in, and we're going to consider you, seems to be the wrong way to do it. Now, you have a motion, I think.
Yes, I have a motion to divide in three zones, and in each zone to have at least two threshold.
While I don't think that's sufficient, I will second the motion because I think it's a better idea than one hauler in each zone.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that? I think we've, many of us have made our points known. Let's take a vote on the Agujianian motion, three districts, two haulers per district.
Councilmember Agujianian?
Yes.
Garpetian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Aaron Ajarian?
No, that motion fails. So let's not talk about that anymore. Is there another motion?
I move that we include the two companies who are currently contracting with the city of Glendale to proceed in the RFP.
I would just clarify by saying that there was one non-responsive out of the nine, so we have eight left. Of the eight, we have brought forward six. The two, I'm not sure if both of them are consultants, contractors with the city of Glendale today, or if one of them is and one of them is not. But what I would say is for you to ask for the two that were responsive in the RFP, because there was one that was non-responsive.
Well, my motion specifically would be for, I thought there were two companies, but the companies that are currently contracted with the city of Glendale to proceed in the RFP.
One of them was non-responsive, Mr. Quintero, so.
One was not responsive?
To the RFP.
Can you?
Okay, well, I don't know which one it was, but the one that was not responsive, then in my motion, that one is out. So I guess it would be the one company that was responsive.
If I may?
No, it's a two. Two were responsive, and one was non-responsive.
There were nine in the beginning.
There was nine, you know, the three that spoke.
So you say go to eight, leave the one that was non-responsive out. Because I think legally, we have to.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, only for the two. Right, that's my motion.
Okay, and let me ask for a clarification from staff. Do the scores that the eight firms already have, because they were ranked and rated, carry into tier three, or is it a clean slate from the third review?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the assessment that the consultant performed alongside with staff's assessment will be a component of the final selection.
Okay, so that carries?
Yes.
The findings to this point carry forward?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Garpetian?
Look, we're going back and forth on these different motions. I think we.
I'm trying to eliminate.
No, I understand, I understand.
Put it up and eliminate or care. Eliminate or carry it forward?
What I want to do is, I don't have a problem with adding the other two because obviously the desire is there and the votes are there. But changing all the zones, because that's what we have today, there's 33 companies picking up, you know, haulers working in the city and we don't have any control over any of them as far as, you know, they're registered, but it's very difficult to control. And the amount of, you know, your trash is being picked up today at two, your neighbors is being picked up eight in the morning. So it's, there's so much commotion going. If you're in downtown, you see these big trucks coming in and out of the city all the time. So by having all of them to work all over the city, I don't think it's going to work. I'm willing to go with the four zones that we have, one per zone, the prices have to be determined, right? At the end of the day, we have to have the prices in, the pricing in for the contracts. And the prices for one zone versus another cannot, we can't regulate that as well to not to defer too much, there's not much difference between one zone to another. One cannot be a dollar, the other one cannot be $10. So there is a limit that we can put on as well. And I think that's what comes up during the discussions that we have with the rest of all the haulers. But as far as, I don't know, is there a motion? Can this be?
I have a motion now.
I'm making a motion now.
It was Mr. Quintero's motion.
Or Mr. Quintero is making a motion.
Come on now. Unless you're making a substitute motion, if you want to get technical about this.
Specifically for the two companies, that's the motion.
To include eight firms in the evaluation to maintain the districts as currently constituted.
Okay. Can I add something to the motion? Since we have four zones, I would like to ask that two haulers for each zone.
Oh, that lost. That lost.
That was three zones and two haulers. This is four zones.
Well, I'm not going to accept that.
And two in each.
I'm not going to accept.
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the substitute motion? Substitute motion fails. Back to the original motion. Is there a second to eight haulers, same number of zones? Mr. Garpetian?
Can we just confirm the name of the two haulers you're adding?
Sure.
Yes. That's a good idea.
And before we take a vote, I have one question regarding being non-responsive.
Okay. So the other two haulers, number seven and eight, are?
Universal and American Reclamation.
Okay. Mr. Garpetian?
One last question before we take a vote. When you say, the gentleman came up and said, you know, they've done a lot of work in other cities, when you say they're non-responsive, I want to understand what it is. Non-responsive to the RFP or non-responsive after the RFP was?
Non-responsive to the RFP.
Right. Did not comply with all the technical requirements of the RFP, did not provide all the documentation required to be in complete response to that RFP.
It's the mayor's discretion.
No. And let's be clear that if any, anyone in an RFP process believes that they were unfairly disqualified, that there are grounds and procedures to challenge the decision of the body, correct? And that time period is 30 days or 60 days or something?
It would depend on the decision that's made with respect to the non-responsive and that decision was final and I'm not, I can't speak to the time.
So we can't, so no, today we can't get into the details and discuss in detail what wasn't done according to the rules of the RFP. But we can't, because of the decision that it was non-responsive, we can't throw that away and say, well, we'll take on the ninth one anyway. The number nine's option is to challenge it.
And I would just add, with respect to the one that was deemed non-responsive, we gave, there were others that we gave everybody the opportunity to, there were some technical requirements that a number of them missed. We gave all of them the opportunity to correct them. They all corrected it except for the one that was continuing to be non-responsive, didn't submit the documentation that was required. And it was explained to that firm very specifically, the reason why they were non-responsive.
Okay. So we have the Quintero motion. Is there a second?
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to consider all eight haulers, and we've given the names of the extra two that we are adding, for tier three review, maintaining our framework of four zones in the city. And this is not negotiating, this is further evaluating and fleshing out the components of their proposal.
But one hauler in each zone?
Yes. Yes, with one per zone, as originally done. So is there a second to the Quintero?
I second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Agajanian?
No.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Reluctantly on my own motion, yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Aaron Ajarian?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Is the air conditioning working in this room or am I just getting excited with all this talk of trash hauling?
Let me...
Mr. Quintero?
Let me just say in closing, since I won't be around for any more deliberations, more than anything else, it's not about the 33 haulers, et cetera. It's really the regulations that are coming down from the state and the way that the waste has to be separated and catalogued and reported as to what's being done with it. So I think that alone, it makes sense to have less haulers operating in the city and being able to better control the process.
Thank you. Can we open the door? Get some, I mean, is it me or is everyone a little warm?
I'm fine.
A little warm, okay. Just crack, you know, prop that door open. And let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, the next item, nine hearings, eight is Director of Public Works.
Let's take a five-minute recess if we can, please.
Before, before you take the five minutes.
No recess yet. Mr. Garpetian?
I have a conflict on the next item, so with your permission, I have to excuse myself.
Is that enough? First.
I received a $500 contribution from one of the gentlemen. He's not on the, he's not the applicant, but just to do the writing because he's, I believe, connected to the, one of the owners.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garpetian. We'll restate it, your excuse.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
What was the five G?
So, we're still in recess. These people are gonna be mad. They're gonna tell their cards in three minutes. Cards on the table.
I don't know. Yeah, they keep televising, don't they?
RD. Hi, Gar. How are you?
Good.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I hope we're not even mic'd up.
Hello.
Are we off?
No, well, if your mics are on, you're live.
Oh.
We're back on. We're waiting for you.
Don't say that.
We are?
We're still in recess. I mean, I can tell some jokes. What's the project, Gar? What's the project?
The car cost project.
What is it?
Like six twenty, six twenty of five, three hundred, four hundred.
On his...
Seriously? Yeah.
On his parking? Take the parking garage.
Parking garage on the management.
Yeah.
And surprise parking on the USA. Because the next project is the parking garage.
How is that little thing gonna affect the 300 unit project?
Even for his, that container, that was a lot of things.
No deal. Okay. Okay. No deal. Deal or no deal? Okay. No deal. Okay. I thought we were gonna have a deal, but we don't have a deal. So, we're still, I guess...
Yep.
Will everyone please take your seats? We are returning from recess. That's what we were doing. We usually don't walk around and talk to each other like that. But we thought we had some different direction we were gonna take on number nine. But no, we are still on track, on the agenda, and would you please read the next item?
Nine is a hearing. Nine A is Director of Public Works regarding public hearing on the appeal of the decision of the Director of Public Works granting encroachment permit number EP 573 for the installation of wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right-of-way located adjacent to 283 Maryland Place. A1 is a motion denying the appeal and upholding the decision of Director of Public Works granting encroachment permit number EP 573. Choos a motion granting the appeal reversing the decision of the Director of Public Works and continuing the matter until February 11th, 2020, for City Attorney to prepare findings consistent with Council direction.
This is a public hearing. I'm gonna open it. When we last left, Councilmember Garpetian was stating on the record the reasons for his recusal from this matter. There was a lot of noise in the room, and it might not have come forward. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to summarize the reasons?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Garpetian announced that he'd be recusing himself from participating in the matter as he had received a campaign contribution from the appellant in this particular case, and so he's recusing himself for the participation.
Thank you. And just procedurally, there are four of us. If it comes out to be a two-two tie, what does that mean?
As you may recall, Mr. Mayor, the charter provides that in the case of a two-to-two tie, the matter is carried over to the next agenda for further discussion, to see if that two-two tie can be broken, or if necessary, have a discussion to see if Mr. Garpetian could participate. As you know, often when we get to the point where we're at a two-two tie before the actual vote, there might be some additional discussion on how to handle that matter before we actually take the vote.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're gonna go directly to Ms. Margarosian, Senior Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. My name is Doreen Margarosian, and I am going to give you a little bit of a background on this proposed small cell facility and the process for tonight's appeal hearing. I will be presenting you with the background of the facility. We'll have our independent expert reviewer, Dr. Jonathan Kramer, who will give you the technical background and answer any technical questions. After that, we will have appellant's presentation. After the appellant's presentation, we will go through the applicant's presentation. Then we'll have public comment, rebuttals, and then we'll get to council deliberation and decision. I wanted to provide you with a brief description of the proposed facility. It's a small wireless telecommunications facility. It's going to be located on a replacement streetlight. What that means is that there exists already a streetlight, but the applicant has proposed to replace the streetlight so that it can meet the load of the small cell facility. The streetlight is located in a non-preferred zone. And the difference between preferred and non-preferred zones in our code is preferred zones for installations of these facilities are in commercial areas, districts, commercial zones, or industrial zones. Non-preferred zones are the residential zones. And the applicant has to demonstrate all of the requirements of the code to be able to install its facilities with the additional requirement that the applicant has to also demonstrate why these facilities cannot be installed in a preferred zone anytime the applicant is proposing to have an installation in a non-preferred or a residential zone. Now, this appeal is before the City Council, and the review of the City Council is de novo. That means that the City Council gets to hear this case from scratch. It's an independent reexamination. It's independent review. You have the right to review everything and anything as if it's being presented for the very first time to you. The City Council's decision will be the final decision of the city. I wanted to provide some photos so to give you a better idea of what the proposed facility will look like. This is the streetlight in question or at issue. The small cell facility will be installed at the very top of the streetlight. This is another view of the same facility. Now, the appellant's appeal, I wanted to provide a brief summary, and then we will hear from the appellant himself. The appellant contends the proposed small cell facility will affect a mixed-use project that's contemplated by the property owner for the property at 283 Maryland Place. Right adjacent to the streetlight is a vacant property, and that's the address. It's 283 Maryland Place. Now, the proposed small cell facility does not conflict with the development project that's conventionally being presented, and you'll hear more about that. It may have some impact on a yet-to-be-proposed mixed-use project. However, even if a project was to come before City Council, and even if a project was to be proposed at the property that's adjacent to the streetlight, there is a provision in our municipal code that says that if, for any reason, the city decides to hypothetically to vacate an alley or to vacate a street and requires the applicant to move or relocate their facilities, then the applicant is to do so. The second basis of the appellant's appeal is that the small cell facility required CEQA review, and there is a specific exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act that exempts small facilities. That's a categorical exemption, and the proposed facility falls within that exemption. Now, I will go through the requirements of our Glendale Municipal Code. It's Section 12.08037 is what's applicable to small cell facilities or anything that's in the public right-of-way and requires an encroachment permit. Dr. Kramer will go through the technical requirements. He will address them. But I just wanted to quickly go through them. There are 10 requirements. One of them is notification requirements. I can represent to you that notice requirements have been met and satisfied. The second is the proposed facility must meet the provisions of the GMC Chapter 12.08. Those are the technical provisions that I'm gonna turn over to Dr. Kramer. The third requirement is that the proposed facility must not interfere with the use of the public right-of-way, and we can represent to you that it does not interfere with the use of the public right-of-way. The fourth requirement is that the proposed facility must not interfere with vehicular, bicycle, and/or pedestrian use of the streets, meaning that it cannot obstruct the sidewalk. It can't be, for example, low enough that a bicyclist could collide with it. So, we look for assurances for these situations as well. The fifth requirement is that the proposed facility must comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Hypothetically, if they were proposing a rather wide streetlight replacement that would narrow the sidewalk and it would be ADA noncompliant, we look to make sure that they're complying with those requirements. The sixth requirement is that the facility has to meet the city's aesthetic standards. Seventh is alternative sites analysis. Dr. Kramer will address that. Eighth requirement is high visibility versus low visibility. In this case, it's a small cell facility atop a streetlight. It's very high up. Ninth requirement is the possibility of co-location for the proposed facility. Dr. Kramer will address that as well, but I can represent to you that we've looked at co-location, and it wasn't a feasible alternative. And number 10 is gap coverage analysis for the proposed facility, another technical aspect which I will let Dr. Kramer address. And with that, I invite Dr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jonathan Kramer. I am the expert that has been retained by the city to evaluate the application for the purposes of this appeal hearing. I was also one of the team that helped to write the original wireless ordinance that this is being considered under. So, I've had the privilege of working with the city for many years, mostly in the background on various projects. In terms of what is being proposed, I took the next two slides that are in the handout, and I've animated it on the screen so that you can actually get a better sense of the areas that AT&amp;T wants to serve. Primarily, it's north along Louise and south along Louise, and then primarily more towards the southeast along the extension of Maryland. And let's see if I've got a pointer here. Yep, I do. So, primarily, the area of improvement that AT&amp;T is trying to achieve is right here. Now, that map, that point right there is centered on AT&amp;T's proposed location. So, this is kind of our starting place, and this explains what their goals are.
Excuse me. What is the difference between before and after again? What's the difference in this understanding?
Well, the way that AT&amp;T has described it, it's the difference between slower data rates and faster data rates. And it appears from their maps that were provided into the record that there is some additional slight new coverage that's provided, but the main portion of the project is to enhance their existing 4G services. And to be clear, this is a proposed 4G site.
Okay. This is 4G?
This is 4G.
This is not 5G?
It's not 5G.
Thank you.
So, in terms of the alternative sites, AT&amp;T analyzed three sites. They analyzed... Oops. So sorry. This is the primary site. There was an alternative. The first alternative is alternative number one, which is essentially across the street. It's about 90 feet straight-line distance, but about 40 feet, actually, to the north of the existing site. The second location is down by the parking lot right here, and the third is a location in front of a residential building on Louise. All three of the alternatives are also not preferred locations, and the reason why this is a not preferred site is that it can't, it cannot be moved into a preferred location. Based on the coverage that AT&amp;T is trying to achieve, they will not be able to achieve it from brand or any of the other more preferred areas. That's part of my analysis, and as I'm sure that you're aware, I presented the council with a long, but I hope readable report a few days ago. So, proposed alternative site number one, that's the one going back... Oops. That's the one going back that is located right here. That's the one that I focused on in the alternative sites analysis. By way of background, I'm a radio frequency engineer whose wife one day said, "You're crazy for not being an attorney," so that's why I became an attorney later in life. So, my basic work is as an RF engineer. So, looking at that and looking at this, this is the photograph that AT&amp;T provided that explained that they couldn't use this site primarily because of the tree foliage, that it would cause interference to the signal. Now, if you recall from the primary slide, that's not the direction that they're trying to transmit, but more importantly, that this is a photograph that AT&amp;T provided that's roughly three years old. A more current photograph shows that this is the tree that they're concerned about. It's obviously been cut back dramatically. And this also shows the alternative site here in relation to the site that AT&amp;T would like. I'll just give you kind of a spatial reference between the two sites. Back to you, and I'll, of course, be available for all the questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. We are going to now invite the appellant and the applicant. However, I also wanted to go over the last slide, and I'll be available for questions as well. As you've read in the council report, the recommendation of staff is for the City Council to deny the appeal based on the technical reasons that Dr. Kramer just went through and to uphold a permit for the encroachment permit for the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the appellant please come forward? And will... Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council and their staff.
Will 10 minutes be sufficient time for you?
I'm a little bit slow probably, you know. Instead of two, you put two places for applicant, I can speak, you know, only me. So, probably 15 minutes.
I'll give you...
I would try.
I'll give you 15 minutes.
I mean, I would organize myself with a handout that I give you two guys, so I can go through one by one. I'm engineer, so I don't want to waste your time and talk a lot of nonsense. My name is Tagi Shuraka. I'm a licensed civil structure engineer since 1968. I'm licensed in California since 1980, and currently I'm a CEO or managing member of 15 LLC for various property. The subject property owns by North Brand Mixed Use LLC, which was formed 2005. And then, at the time of that form of LLC, we were joint venturing with Sima Rusty's family for putting their property and our property for a major project, consists of three towers. Each tower was over 30 stories. And then, you know, we approached the city and also all of the city council at the time, and I'm going to show you if you go to the page four of the handout. That was the money that we spent at the time around...
Page four?
Page four, yes.
Yeah.
That's the rendering that shows, if you look at it, three towers. One tower at the corner of the Duran and Brand Boulevard, which is the existing US building, and one tower is the corner of the 134 and Brand, which is the Citibank Building, and then one tower is the one which is the top of the Curran Parking Structure in 600 North Brand. At the time, I provided, you know, a copy of the...
I'm sorry.
Later... Yes.
So, which rendering you are referring at?
Referring here...
Among these, which one you are talking?
There are so many pictures here, you know. You can go the first one, if you see, the first tower.
Yes.
And the first tower that you see here is the, you know, the Citibank Tower.
Okay.
And then the round tower, which is at the corner of the north, east corner of Duran and Brand Boulevard.
The tallest one.
Which is the US Bank Building.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the third tower is the, on the top, you know, in the parking structure, 600 North Brand.
Okay.
Excuse me. Maryland.
Maryland.
I should mention that we do own the 600 North Brand and 600 North Maryland under SWS VLT LLC. But, you know, the interests of the members are the same of North Brand Mixed Use. So, when we proposed that project, you know, discussing with the city, they recommend us that we acquire this 628, 625 Louise in order to have the access to the whole project. So, we really bought it very expensive at the time, and then we had hired a president, you know, the letter of November 15, 2005, which was signed, page three, which was signed by myself and Raximo Rusty to appraise that property, and finally, we got that property in order to make the accessibility to our project, you know, the combined project, much, much, much better. And then, since that, we kept it, you know. The reason that that project didn't go because we faced with the recession of 2008, and then everything was shelved. So, we disengaged our, you know, joint venture with the Sima Rusty's family, and then, you know, as you know, I showed, you know, here last week, you had, you know, page... If you go page five, is the Sima Rusty's family project that was presented to the City Council, you know, at least last speech. And then, of course, six page, which was part of the project, also show the site plan overall, that you can see each property location. Now, I'm suggesting that we go to the three alternative that AT&amp;T, you know, mentioning in their handouts. Alternative number one is probably the best alternative, and the reason they are not recommending on that, and it was only one tree, we would be able to provide the cost of relocating that tree to another location, and that issue would go away. You know, for one of the project, I was involved in the late 80s in City of Thousand Oaks. I was the head engineer for that project, and we had 20 oak tree in City of Thousand Oaks. We spent $20,000 for each tree, $400,000 to relocate, you know, that one, and, you know, the project right now, and that's our property that we sold to the City of Thousand Oaks, is City of Thousand Oaks within there, and, you know, major project. But relocating the trees is not that, you know, expensive at all, especially here, we have only one. Now, alternative two is the front of an apartment complex. If that reason is enough not to put alternative two, why should put it front of a gateway of a major complex, Sima Rusty project and our project, and I spent to the field, you know, hopefully by end of February this year or early March, we would give the whole package of the design for the two tower, one tower in 600 North Brand and one tower for 600 North Brand as a phase one design review. review. And alternative number three, of course, is front of the, our parking structure in 600 North Brand, which is out of question, because that's really interfering with our project right there. I mean, I would, they proposed that. So I'm going to make it short, and I request that the city council consider their authority in mind. We would pay for the cost of relocation, or under the permit, we can relocate it, you know, to satisfaction of the city. And we have expert in that, in that business, you know, for, of course, this is a protected tree, but as an environmental issue, we would, you know, protect those three there. So basically, that's my argument.
Okay. So you say, "Put it at alternative one." You'll take care of the tree.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is the applicant here? Would you like to address the council? And I'll give you the same amount of time I allotted the appellant, but he didn't use all of his time, so.
Thank you, members of the city council and Mayor Najarian. My name is Adrian Kulichi. I'm with Yukon Group. We're an architecture, engineering, and permitting group, and we represent AT&amp;T. Now, first and foremost, I'd like to point out that the proposed AT&amp;T small cell is contained entirely within the public right of way. And it's a replacement for an existing light standard that's completely in the public right of way. Our replacement pole would in no way infringe upon the private property that's adjacent to it. And furthermore, I'd like to point out that under California Public Utility Commission Section 7901, AT&amp;T has a right to place equipment and antennas in the public right of way. Under Section 7901.1, local jurisdictions have the right to regulate the time, place, and manner of construction only. In this instance, since the appellant has not filed a formal application with the City of Glendale Planning Department, there is, excuse me, prior to the initial approval for the AT&amp;T small cell, there is simply no existing conflict with any sort of development. Now, under the topic of the alternate one that was suggested for us to utilize, at the time that we initially looked at it, the tree foliage was significant enough to prompt us to shy away from that location, seeing as how it's currently cut back. It also gives us a sense that it would initially, would also grow back and provide potential coverage problems in the future. Now, as far as conflict with the proposed, the potential proposed development, we don't really see anything wrong with it, because if there is a compliance issue in the future, if something is built there, that's built into the conditions of approval, and AT&amp;T would have, we'd have to figure out something as far as relocation of the site. But given the present state that we are at, and given the fact that the appellant has not filed a formal application, AT&amp;T would like to stay the course with the proposed location. And that concludes my initial response, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Quintero.
I have a question, or maybe more than one. So I'm not a engineer, like our consultant. So in putting up the tower, is it just strictly you're going line of sight to other locations? Do you need a special conduit, or is there something that goes into the-
Correct. Fiber and power.
Okay. So you need both fiber and power?
They place 18 by 20 inch handholds and excavate underneath. In this particular instance, it's only a few feet away, I believe about nine or 10 feet away.
From where you're proposing?
From the face of the pole. Then the replacement pole is usually placed about three feet over in order to prevent an outage of service for the light itself. So they place the new foundation, new pole, before they remove the old one to prevent any outage. That's about a three-foot shift.
Right. So along that sidewalk, along that side of the street, you already have the power and you have a conduit with-
Correct. We, correct, we would piggyback with GWP service for the-
So then, if you went across the street, you'd have to go under the street, tear it up briefly, and then have to go up to the-
Correct. So currently, the, there's minimal, very minimal ground disturbance with the proposed project. Also, I'd like to point out that we regularly propose and are approved for locations that are next to mixed-use projects, next to commercial projects, residential projects in the right of way. So it's not, nothing unusual about this proposal compared to any others that were recently approved by the City of Glendale, AT&amp;T small cells, next to various non-preferred zones.
So once again, I'm not an engineer, but as I drove this neighborhood, and I drive it frequently, but I specifically went there to take a look, it seemed to me that the location off of the freeway had a much clearer shot going what would be east to west, maybe even going north to south along Maryland. It seemed like physically it was a better location to do line of sight setups.
Due to the, due to the way the RF analysis was conducted for this, you know, obviously it's done from the GPS coordinates of the proposed location, which is not adjacent to mature trees with foliage. So that, again, that location was selected based on that criteria as the least intrusive. And also from an engineer's standpoint-
Isn't it also the more expensive to the first site, where you have the power and conduit handling?
That's, I mean, that's, since we didn't propose it there, that's, we haven't done an engineering analysis on which way the trench routes would go. So we do know that at the current location, it's the least intrusive ground disturbance possible for a small cell in the general area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we all are reserving our rights to ask questions, but let's go to the public. I have several cards. Ara Manugin. Three minutes each.
I could probably do this in less than three minutes. Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, my name's Ara Manugin, and I'm very concerned about what I just saw and was learned tonight, that this is a 4G cell that they're proposing to put up. But regardless of whether it was 4G or 5G, it does violate ADA. And how does it violate ADA? Because people in general are sensitive to and susceptible to diseases caused by RF. And specifically, the National Toxicity Program had a $30 million research that they did, and they found that 4G and 5G causes cancer, causes damage to DNA, and so on. As Tony earlier tonight said, stated, you've all taken an oath of office to uphold Constitution, be that the US Constitution and the Constitution of California, which gives the public the right to good health, happiness, and safety. And I ask that you, you accept or vote for this appeal and grant this appeal, but at the same token, I would suggest the city strongly look at this ADA issue, because it doesn't say ADA, as people can walk by, it says Americans with Disability Act, has to be honored, has to be fulfilled. And ADA and FHA, the Fair Housing Act, does trump FCC. The telecom companies, AT&amp;T, they're in for the profit, they don't care about our health. And these studies, as we've presented to you, show cancer and DNA damage, and it's your responsibility as elected officials that have taken an oath of office to uphold the Constitution. So I ask tonight that you do that. Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Mr. Agaginyan.
The question in front of us to have, one side of the street or the other?
No, to deny it entirely. It's, this is, this violates ADA, it should not have even been allowed to get this far.
All right, thank you, thank you. Do we have the question?
Can someone address the ADA issue? I was not familiar that radio frequency was part of the ADA requirements. Is there anyone that is qualified to answer? If not, we'll just let it hang.
Mr. Mayor and council members, now I'm switching from my engineer's hat to my attorney's These issues are commonly raised at hearings like this, so let me go through all of the three major ones. First, the issue of, does the ADA apply, and then FHA, and then finally, RF safety. As for the ADA, you've got a problem here that isn't a problem for the city, it's a problem for people who have claims of disability for RF sensitivity, which, by the way, you don't have anyone in front of you tonight who's actually making that claim. You've got a generalized claim. So the ADA was adopted before the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And the ADA actually contains a provision that says if this law is in conflict with another federal law, we set aside the ADA. Now, because the Telecommunications Act of 1996 came after the ADA, Congress could have, but did not, put an exclusion in the Telecom Act for ADA-related issues. So as a practical matter, ADA doesn't apply. Neither does FHA, because you've got no housing issue. So that's an on-issue as to this as well. And finally, the RF issue. And this is the big issue, and I know that the public's very concerned about it. So give me one minute just to talk about that issue, because something's happened recently that the council should be aware of. Historically, at the 1996 Telecom Act, Congress delegated sole national authority to the FCC to establish national standards for RF safety. And they did that. They published them back in 1997. And over the course of many years, those standards have stayed. And a number of years ago, the FCC actually entered into another process, basically to say, "Okay, public, tell us why these standards should be changed." They went through a full process of a public comment period, they received, my staff's read every single comment, page after page after page of comments saying, "It's dangerous." The problem is that none of those comments actually proposed something that was repeatable science. So the FCC, on December 4th of last year, released new rules that said basically, "We're keeping our standards the same," because there's no basis for us to change those standards. Some countries have higher standards, some countries have lower standards, but these are the standards that the FCC has adopted. Now, in my report, I went through my analysis, and I certified to you as your expert that the proposed project, whether it's at the proposed location or anywhere else, will comply with the FCC rules. And under the, there's actually a State of California rule on the same point, under both state, federal regulations, and the Telecom Act, that's the end of the exploration. So that's, that's just not a subject to discuss. With that, if you have, if you have no more questions, I'll sit down until the next time you call me up.
Thank you.
I have a question for-
Mr. Agaginyan.
The question in front of us is whether to have that one side or the other side of the street, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the question before you is actually a little more narrow than that. It's on the subject site that the applicant has made an application for to put a small cell on the, on that particular light pole. The other alternative sites, an alternative, council would have to find, in order to basically deny this application, they'd have to find that there's an alternative site that provides equal or better service and would comply, would be feasible. And then, if that's the finding of the council, then it would be up to the, and the council bases, on that finding, bases a denial of the, or upholding the appeal but denying the application, then at that point, then it would be up to the applicant then to submit for that alternative application. So you're not necessarily choosing between the two, you're deciding whether or not the application merits approval or merits, in reality, merits denial. And then, you, but you can base that on the fact, base that on whether you find, based on substantial evidence in the record, that there's an alternative site that provides equal or better service than the proposed site.
But we're not approving the alternative.
That's correct.
If the alternate site is applied for, it can be again challenged and appealed.
Correct.
Okay. The next card, I believe you've spoken, Mr. Shoraka, and you'll speak again. Adrian Kulichi, you have spoken, and you'll have a chance at rebuttal.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Well, every time, you know, you know how we stand regarding the 5G and towers. Every time we have brought this up to council members, you say that our hands are tied because of the FCC. Well, there's lots of things you can do. You can look at the current lawsuits that are against FCC. You can work with other municipalities to challenge the FCC ruling. And you can look at the ordinance and design something more protective for the, you know, civilians. So there is a lot you can do. I would really appreciate if you look into these other cities who are challenging FCC. And we also would like to have a study session set up specially for the 5G. You know, we bring in our people who are qualified, and we have a study session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Wireless devices and cell tower emissions have never been safety tested, period. The industry does emission testing, but they have never done pre-market safety testing. And they have, and they don't do post-market surveillance to see if people are getting harmed after these cell towers are being put in. And according to many studies, people are getting harmed. And I'm sorry, I left something behind, and I wanted to put on the record.
Do you want to go get it?
Yes, please.
Stop the clock for a moment, please.
I have in front of me here a brochure from Verizon Cell Phone for their, for their insurance, for their cell phones. And buried deep within their Verizon cellphone insurance, there's exclusions that they do not cover. So here, deep within-
Look at that. Talk about fine print.
And there are exclusions that they don't cover. They say this insurance does not apply to the lost damage identified in any of the following or directly or indirectly caused by the resulting of any of the following. And one of those is pollution. They do not cover pollution. And how do they define pollution? The discharge, dispersal, seepage, migration, or escape of pollutants. Pollutants means any solid, liquid, gaseous, or thermal irritant or contaminant, including smoke, vapor, soot, fumes, acid, alkalies, chemicals artificially produce electric fields, magnetic fields, electromagnetic fields, sound waves, microwaves, and all artificially produced ionizing and non-ionizing radiation and/or waste. Waste includes materials to be recycled, reconditioned, or reclaimed. And this is, in their brochure, they do not cover pollution in all of its terms, ionizing radiation, microwave radiation, which is what is being emitted from these cell towers. And these, this pollution is going to be trespassing people's property to go into their homes. In their own words, it's called pollution. And we are allowing it to be going into people's properties. In my last statement, I talked about the Kewa Band of Cherokee Indians that, there was a lawsuit that just happened in August of 2019, that said that NEPA review is required on every small cell. It's its own category now, because it was arbitrary and capricious for the FCC to categorically exclude all small cells. Small cells are many, there's going to be so many, and they cannot say that it doesn't have any environmental effect. So you need to go- So you need to go back to that and make sure that every single small cell has a NEPA review on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goro Nazarian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Goro Nazarian. Till now, we discussed, you know, the, everybody discussed nicely, explained their comments. The one thing that I want to bring to your attention, or it's meridian beneficiary of the AT&amp;T too, if that one tree foliage, it will give all that, you know, disturbance to the frequency, we know it's a fact. It's a project that's coming to that vacant lot and crosses street. And as by the zoning requirement, you know, city, city codes, we have to provide landscaping all around the, on the property lines, on the setback areas. And if one tree, it gives that much problem to that antenna, find out the landscaping that we will put on our projects, what it will be the effect. That's just, I wanted to bring to your attention that right now, it's a vacant lot, there is no tree, but it's coming. We, we know that the project is coming with a lot of the landscaping and trees because of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. I have a question for Mr. Shoraka. If you could come forward. So this design that you've shown on page four has not been submitted to the city yet. In fact, that design was a, going to be the joint venture with the Simarustis. Was it not? Taking part of that land?
It did not formally submit to the city, but you know, believe it or not, at the time, of the money of 2005, we jointly spent $500,000 of all this plan. I just brought one page, I didn't want to know to have all of the package and so forth. At the time, we met with all the staff and all the city council, and we got their agreement to eventually, and they generally agreed that they vacated North Maryland and Maryland Lane to give it to the project in order to have a better environment for the public. But at this point, of course, since Simarusti submitted project, and we are going to submit our project within, you know, end of the February, March, you know, that vacant in the Maryland and the Maryland Lane is moved right now.
Right. So, please tell me how the small cell facility would interfere with your development project that is not proposed yet? Because that's what we're here for, you're saying this is interfering with your development. How is it interfering?
Because we, we, you know, it's, you know, because we are going to build the building, and you know, they are arguing that alternative number two is not good because it's front of a two-story apartment building. So even the zoning of that, you know, parcel, when we build it there, is going to be much more density that the alternative number two they're discussing it. They're saying we don't recommend alternative two, because there is an apartment building. So I'm coming here and saying, our company is going to, believe it or not, about $750 million for these two towers that we are going to support. And then fighting with the AT&amp;T is not, you know, uncostly, it would cost us arm and leg to come back again, hearing, convincing them, now they came themselves. And they're experts here, and saying the alternative number one is not good because there is one tree. Why we are wasting all of our time, our money, the city's resources, our resources, and so forth. I didn't even touch the issue of the liability. Because, you know, in the, during my lifetime here, I've involved a lot of big lawsuits. The city by itself is not our business, have to consider, because if you go to the, I, I didn't mention that one, you know, let's go to the page, I show page, one of these speaker at the time, which, by the way, I put that one there, that out of the 17 speakers, 16 person in the hearing of the August 6, 19 opposed to this. 95% of the people, like the-
Yeah, that's, Mr. Sharaka, that's something different. Those were 5G discussions, this is 4G. So my question is, how is putting this facility on an, which would be an existing or adjacent to an existing light pole, stop you, prevent you, from developing your facility? Because your development, because I think you've got many more issues than a light pole to develop that 30-story tower again. How? Tell me how. That's, the only way I can agree with you and give you your appeal is if you tell me that this is going to interfere with your development. And the Glendale Municipal Code even takes that into account, that says if, in the future, you can tell us how it's preventing you from developing, then at the cost of the applicant, he has to, or they have to, remove that and put it to another place. It may be two years, three years, five years, the plans you gave us are from 2005. Why shouldn't we let them do it now? And if in two years, three years, you're saying, I can't develop it, we shouldn't let them replace it to another location?
Mr. Nazarian, you know, I'm as a businessman, I can do it, you know, far. Even it eventually affect our financial issue there, because we have to disclose to all of our occupant of apartment or condo, whatever you have, all of these issues that we have. And that one, again, by itself, prevents a lot of sensitive people, especially high-end residents that are coming to this tower. Because right now, as you know, in the last six, seven years, you know, three, four, 5,000, you know, five-story was built. I'm living in WSLA, right now, they are selling $2,000 per square foot. Now you have opportunity that a developer like us to come to the city and erect something, you know, in that magnitude, and we are requesting that even your own expert of the AT&amp;T saying that a tree, you know, is the prevention for that one. An argument of Frank is very correct. When you put it in that area, as a, you know, as an engineer myself, like life engineer, you have more open, you know, towards West and Vision 134 and so forth.
Are you going to tell your people that you're 50 feet away from a freeway, one of the very busy freeway, and there's fumes, and there's particulate matters?
Oh, we do-
Is that worse than a, than a AT&amp;T tower?
That the AT&amp;T wanted to put it there, and then we went, you know, talked with the city council, we ruined the motion, and you know, we went and exchanged it there.
You can say excellent phone reception and charge extra for that. Because I don't have excellent phone reception in my house, and it's a problem for me. Okay, thank you.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Shoraka?
I'd like to have the doctor come up again and, I noticed, yeah.
Attorney Kramer, Dr. Kramer.
I noticed that while the speakers were at the podium, you were taking Copia's notes, and I'd like to hear what you have written down in response to some of their allegations. And especially about the NEPA. I'm interested in, NEPA, NEPA?
Yes.
NEPA, okay.
And the reference to the Kewa Band of Cherokee Indians.
Okay.
The statement that the speaker made was absolutely correct and has no applicability whatsoever to us. And let me tell you why. The key is the title of the case, Band of Indians, that relates back to federal property. NEPA applies to two different situations. Number one, projects on federal property, this is not. And projects that are funded by federal dollars, this is not. It's outside of NEPA. Something we hear a lot, but as to that carve-out on federal property, absolutely correct. The DC Circuit overturned that. But that was a very, very limited overturning in a very specific set of, basically, two prongs. The issue of pollution, well, I'll tell you, if I'm, if, if I was critiquing Verizon's attorney to find every possible carve-out to offer an insurance policy and then not have to pay off on it, I'd probably put something like third Tuesday of the week, or something too. Again, the issue here is that you are facing complete federal preemption. It is not something that you consider because we're just not allowed to. It just isn't possible for us to consider. The only question that we have under both state and federal law and regulations is, does the proposed project before you comply with the FCC rules? As your expert, as the person who co-authored, co-authored the FCC's guide, the local governance on the subject, I'm telling you, it does. So that's really the end of that exploration. Now, in terms of the landscaping damage question, it, it ties back again to RF, that's the basic, if it's going to, if it's going to interfere with RF, because of RF. And again, it's, it's, the question would be, if a cell site went in and was going to be proposed within the drip, the drip loop of a tree, that would be something that we could deal with. Because it's not RF-related. But this is just not within your authority to do. I was writing notes everywhere. I believe that's what I have. Yeah, that's what I've got, questions.
RF technology, this cell technology is only line of sight? Is that what it is? I mean, it literally has to be lined up with other cell sites?
At the frequencies that are used, they are not 100% line of sight. For example, we're not line of sight to a cell site in this building. And yet, cell phones will still work. There's some building penetration by the signal, not a lot. Normally, this is about 90% of the power is lost when you come through a wall. But these operate on very low power. The, the cell phones operate in very low power. So the practical matter is the network is designed to penetrate into homes, into cars, it's to serve people who are walking on the street. So line of sight is important, but at the frequencies we're talking about for this particular cell site, and again, focusing back to this appeal, which is really important to see on the facts of this appeal, it's, it's just not a consideration. Line of sight helps, but it's not the defining factor.
Okay, thank you.
One more question.
Ms. Devine.
She also meant, I think she, she mentioned that this has never been safety tested and/or post-market tested. Surveyed.
Again, these relate back exactly to RF safety, which is out of your purview.
Oh.
I'm sorry. That's just, that's just the way the federal and state laws work. I'll be available.
So, Mr. City Attorney, if we made a finding discussing RF dangers, would that be grounds for overturning a decision by this council?
It would, it wouldn't be against our recommendation, yes, because as we said, and pretty clear that we're preempting on the RF emission grounds.
Someone would take us on a writ, judge?
Some other, some other type of challenge, that's-
They considered RF.
Right.
It's out of their purview, their decision's overturned. I'm going to go.
Question.
Yes.
Whoever will answer our stamp. Who owns the land by that pole? There is-
The vacant land.
Mr. Shoraka's company.
He does.
He bought it.
The appellant's company, yes.
Who bought it?
The vacant land on North Maryland.
Vacant lot.
Ma'am.
That, that same owner, she-
That's yours?
Yeah.
They own the land?
Yes.
Yes.
They bought it. Mr. Quintero.
All right, I'm ready.
Oh, hold on.
So what I'm going to do is give the applicant a chance, and then the appellant will have last shot, and then we can discuss argument. So let me call up the applicant again, you have five minutes if you'd like to make any closing comments or rebuttal. You're good, you're going to stand, Pat? Mr. Shoraka, you have the last chance to argue before council. For five minutes.
When I came from Pennsylvania, 1977, California, I landed in Glendale. And we have a very, although I'm living in WSLA Brentwood area, but I have that connection with the Glendale. And I see that these items prevent us to come to spend more money and more effort to here. Currently, right now, I'm in process of developing a 17-acre in city of Santana, and when, you know, Hassan Hakoni from here went to the, you know, city of Santana, become the director, he changed our property to new downtown. We are putting 934 apartments there and 200 existing, you know, medical facility. All of this negative in the Glendale push us back to not come here. I'm requesting that the city council put aside of AT&amp;T power to come to a small, you know, people like us, that we are trying to do something good for the city, and then, you know, they push us back. I'm requesting again that with our respect, please go to the alternative number one, doesn't affect us, you know, at all, and if you pay for that, you know, removal of the tree, wherever the location the city approved, we pay for the cost and we do it.
Thank you. Okay, council can deliberate and argue and discuss. Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, comment perhaps. So I did drive by the site to take a look at it, and I think that alternative one is a perfectly logical site. It's off the freeway with clear visibility east to west, and I repeat once again, north to south along Maryland. So I think that's a perfectly logical site. It appears that AT&amp;T would have to spend a few more bucks to go across the street to that site, since running along the sidewalk, the representative indicated that it's only five or six feet away, so this would mean going 30 feet or whatever it, whatever that distance is. But I think technically, it absolutely would would be an equal or better site and consequently give equal or better service. So that will be my motion to-
Again, if that's, ultimately, it ends up being the direction of the council, it would be a motion to uphold the appeal, deny the
Right.
site based on the finding about the alternative, and we would, we would ask that you direct us to prepare findings consistent with that, that's ultimately the direction of the council.
And then whether the applicant pays to move that tree or not, I guess that's a separate issue at a separate time, whether we hold him to that, to that possibility. But anyway, I think that's a perfectly logical location for it, and there's no, no question that it can be done. It doesn't put a tremendous burden on AT&amp;T to, to do that. Then let me just comment in terms of our expert. So basically, the FCC and night, and this doesn't have anything to do with the motion, or maybe even what we're discussing tonight, but in 1997, the FCC set standards. Do we have some idea of what's transpired since 1997? We're in 2020. Here. My, I mean, it's like multiple, multiple increase in usage and, and RF waves and everything else that's out in the sky. So the fact that the providers, like AT&amp;T and Verizon and everyone else, the fact that they haven't been sort of forced to do some research to try to establish what medical consequences might be taking place, I find that, well, I don't find it amazing, because that's how politics work in Washington DC. So I'm not at all impressed that, you know, a few years ago, that the FCC said, well, we'll just continue with the standards from 1997. Boy, I sure wish that we, in fact, could get some of the, some of the providers to begin to fund organizations that could do some research to see if it's true or not. Maybe as a matter of fact, it's not true that there is, there are no consequences to all of the different radio waves, but I don't believe the issue's been examined the way it should be.
Ms. Devine.
Okay, I, I would, I would agree with Councilmember Quintero. I want to first thank Dr. I want to first thank Dr. Kramer. It seems that this was an, really an unbiased opinion and based totally on legal standards and law, and I appreciate that. I think, I can, I can make the findings that alternate number one is, should be the location. The tree is not an issue, they're willing to take care of the tree. Dr. Kramer says it's just the same as the other side, except it's, even if there's a, Mayor Najarian, with all due respect, I think in the opposite way that you, that you, that you did. If, let's say, eventually you're going to have to move it, or you might have to move it, you know, put it here and then move it later, I'm of the opinion that put it in the right place first, and then, nobody has to worry about moving it or changing it or anything. It's where it, it, it's in a good location. So, that, I would then uphold the appeal and ask for relocation. Agreeing with Mr. Councilmember Quintero.
Ms. Agajanian.
No comment?
No. So, are we on the record, Ms. Devine, that you're approving another 30-story tower on North?
No.
Well, that's what this is all about, because he's saying this is gonna prevent him from developing that 30-story, 300-foot development. Here it is, folks. So, I think that this development is eons and light-years away from ever seeing reality, especially since there's another huge development that's coming through just adjacent to this. So, I don't see this ever being developed in this manner. What's more, this isn't about, is alternative one better than the current location? That is not what it's about. That is not a basis for denying the current location. Tell me, tell the applicant why the current location is bad. We've got a list of criteria, I haven't heard one of those criterion being expressed today. Even the, even the appellant himself could not tell me why it's not going to be, why it's interfering with his development. These were just vague, vague answers he was giving. And the amount of, the amount of construction, even if they're, even if this were to be approved by some development-loving council a few years from now, the amount of excavation and, and work and disturbance that that would provide is, is factors more than a single light pole with a tower on it. So, you know, I think we have to have findings, I'm not sure any findings have been enunciated. I think we're gonna see a vacant lot there for many, many years to come, and to deny the placement of the facility at that location on the presumption, I mean, you guys are saying this is gonna be built, and this is gonna be interfering with the applicant's, the appellant's, uh, construction. I don't know if the news press sees this. This is the new one, and we're on the council saying, "Oh, no, we can't put the 4G facility there because we're gonna disturb his development rights?" There are so many issues before this thing gets anywhere close to seeing the light of day than a 4G pole in the public right-of-way that meets each and every one of our requirements under the municipal code. Somebody point out to me what of the six, one of the 10 points in the municipal, of the municipal code is not, is not met by the placement of this. Because we're gonna have to make a finding when you deny this, if that's where the vote is going, I, I don't think it can be done. I think you're putting our city attorney into the position of making silk out of a spider's web. I don't think it, because we haven't heard it, there's been no evidence before us, you're saying, "Well, alternative one is better." That's not the issue here. It's not whether one is better, two is better, or three is better. What's wrong with the current site? We have rules, we have to follow the rules. Even in the future, if there's an issue with this development, then the AT&amp;T company is under the burden of replacing it and putting another spot. So, that's where I'm.
Can, can we, I think I can cite the finding, number seven, alternative sites analysis, and that's what they, that's what the doctor has done, and he's told us that the second, the alternative one is just as good as the other alternatives.
Is that what you said, doctor? Alternative one is the same as?
Right here. It's right here.
We heard evidence from AT&amp;T that alternative one is not as good. And there's been no other evidence on that besides the AT&amp;T evidence that came forward.
Oh, it's right here.
My analysis is that the coverage from alternative one would be essentially equal to that of the proposed site.
But not better.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very conservative and just stop where I've said and say that it's, that it's at least equal, based on my experience as an expert in RF transmission.
Based on a common sense observation of this site, it is just way more open than it would be on the, the site that AT&amp;T has chosen. And I just have a feeling, and this is not scientific, but I have a feeling if you're five, just like any construction project, if you're five feet from power and five feet from the fiber, hey, let's go ahead and pick this one. Why go across the street and over to the side? It's certainly gonna be more expensive for AT&amp;T, no doubt about it, but I think it makes more sense in terms of the location than next to what someday will be a project. It'll never be what, what was proposed in 2005, but it's a nice, empty lot. I think in the past, we've actually considered buying it for, for affordable housing, if I remember correctly, or at least someone talked about it. Anyway, one of these days, there'll be some housing built there, two-story, three, or whatever it is. But at any rate, I think this location is just more open, clear visibility, direct sight, direct line of sight to other towers, and I'm fine with it.
Okay, so.
If I may just add to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to comment. Just a couple of things. So, just to reiterate, it is true that, you know, the decision of the council cannot be based on, should not be based on the proposed, the project that the appellant has spoken to, only because it's, it's not a relevant inquiry, there's a, there's a mechanism in the code that deals with that, and in reality, it's speculative at this point. The council does have the authority to consider the alternative site in its analysis, but it also has to make some form of finding that there's a legitimate time, place, manner concern with the location that it's in. It could be the aesthetics, it's more, if you find it to be more aesthetically pleasing in the, in the alternative site than the proposed location, and I think that's kind of what I was hearing from you. If that's what you, if that's what I'm hearing, that would be a proper basis, and we're certainly gonna bring those findings back based on your comments and based on what's in the record, if that ends up being the council discretion. The, the recommendation is still, from the staff, obviously still to approve it, to approve the application, to deny the appeal on the basis that the alternative site is just equal to, it's not better than, and that it is, you're not getting any additional benefit by putting in the alternative site in terms of a preferred versus non-preferred location. But again, that's, that's your decision at this point.
And the only problem with that is, the basis for this appeal is that it was interfering with his development rights. So, this council has gone further than the appellant has gone. So, maybe they should hire you for his legal team, because those are not the arguments he made. Those are not the arguments he made. Anyway, you ready for a vote?
Well, yeah, and look, I'm quite frankly not interested in development and the proposed development and so forth. I'm just taking a look at this and looking at the two locations. One is right off the freeway with nothing but open space and a clear shot down Maryland, and that makes a lot more sense than on a side street, so.
You made a motion, and I'll second it.
So, your motion is to.
The motion will be at 9:82, granting the appeal, reversing the decision of the Director of Public Works, and continuing the matter until February 11th, 2020, for the city attorney to prepare findings consistent with the council direction.
That is my motion.
Okay, let's take roll call. Well, close the public hearing. Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
No.
Garpetian?
Quintero? Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
No.
So, now, back to the, one of the first questions I asked for the evening. What do we do?
So, Mr. Mayor, you can either have some further discussion, the motion did not, the motion died, so unless you have further discussion or take a further motion, it will be brought back to next week's agenda for further discussion. I will, in the interim, obviously, research the ability for Mr. Garpetian to participate, have a discussion with Mr. Garpetian, if, in the event that you don't resolve it here tonight, which would be our recommendation to try to resolve it here tonight, but.
Is there any argument that, that has not been made by anyone that wants to?
Well, I'd like to hear Mr. Agajanian's.
No comment.
Then I think that's where we're gonna end it for tonight, unresolved, and we'll see you next week.
And if, right. And we'll ask that the matter be continued to next week's meeting so that it won't, there won't be further public comment.
However, I do encourage the parties to communicate with each other, and in the event you can seek a resolution outside of council's purview, we certainly welcome that, don't we, Mr. Garcia?
Certainly.
I just wanna add, the reason was I would rather see they discuss with each other as they told us they would discuss the matter.
Well, we've given them an extra incentive now because they'll have to be back next week.
Yeah, I want.
So, please speak with each other, and you've heard how council is laying on this, and that'll be it. Next item.
Next item would be oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker will, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I do have one card.
We have one card. I have a card from Rafi Krikorian. Please keep it down, folks, as you exit the chambers.
Hey, hello again, how are you? So, several months ago.
Just a moment, Mr. Krikorian, let's make sure you get the full attention of council as you speak.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Let's start the clock.
Several months ago, I addressed the council in regards to the review of current building codes causing adverse, adverse effect, sorry, adverse impact on the development of basic, small-scale multifamily units in Glendale. That day, you voted unanimously to bring the matter to the table and have a full discussion. And the items we discussed that you wanted to study was the restriction of height on the subterranean parking structure to only three foot above ground. I mentioned that that was causing a great hardship and a great amount of difficulty in order to produce these small lots with four, five, or up to six units. It's very, very difficult when you have to dig down so deep and have to spend, you know, $100,000 to $250,000 shoring, because when you dig deep, you have to shore around the property. And so that, you know, these things add up, and it becomes almost impossible, and people that are building those units are, are, are maybe breaking even, there, there's, there's nothing in it. Restrictions, the second one, is the restriction of overall height to 26-foot. That's also, you know, on small lots, that's not enough height to produce. For example, I have a 7,000-square-foot lot, and with that, with that height limit, I, I will not be able to produce, you know, five units. Currently, there are lots smaller than mine that support six units. And this is a 1250, R1250 zone, a high-density zone. The third item was eliminate the requirement of 200-square-foot open space for lots zoned R1250. R1250 are, in your own, in your own description, it's described as high-density. So, high-density and 200-square-foot open space, they don't really jive. Allow an additional 10-foot canopy to support solar panels, that's something that we had discussed as well. Right now, if, if I were to build a building, if I wanted to put a canopy on top of the roof, I, I, I don't think that would be allowed, but I think it should. Instead of laying the panels flat on the roof, I'm suggesting we allow a canopy, then you can utilize the area on the roof for maybe recreation. Also, allow an additional, so lastly, take, take any other available measures to facilitate and promote this type of lower-impact and more affordable development, which is more suitable to the average Glendale resident. That's my presentation, and I hope I can get some feedback. This was supposed to come back, and if somebody could tell me, you know, give me some idea when it's gonna come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And can you give us some ideas to when this?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, you gave us direction to go look at it, and indeed, we have started that task. As I described a little bit, we are combining that with the South Glendale Community Plan, Tropico. We're on a clock for that, and so we put the two together because Tropico will inform the rest of that. We're continuing to go through that planning exercise, if you will. We are, have also sought a grant that will help us accelerate that time. We should have this no later than the end of the year, as we go all through developing the code, bringing it to the planning commission, bringing it back to you. If we can get that grant, which we believe we will, we can perhaps have that earlier, maybe late summer.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Do we have new business?
We do have one item. I don't have a written motion, so I'll just read it into the record, Mr. Mayor. The council met in a closed session to discuss the initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.9D4, and to discuss anticipated litigation. In the closed session, council gave us authority, or requesting authority, to file an administrative appeal with another public agency. At the time that that matter is filed and served, we could provide information on that lawsuit to any person interested. So, that, we request that motion be made.
Does someone like to move that?
I'll move the item.
Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Quintero? Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
That concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.